For Thursday, July 8th, 2021. It's now 6:05. Um, this is a virtual meeting as allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law followed following the COVID shutdown. This meeting is being recorded. Others are welcome to do so after informing the chair. Um, and I'll ask the clerk to call her role, please. When she mentioned your town, if you could say your name and whether you're an alternate or Dalia.
For that, Adams.
Duval, alternate.
Thank you. Alfred. Beckett. Cheshire.
A Crob, delegate.
Thank you. Clarksburg. Dalton. Egremont.
Mary McGurn, alternate.
Thank you. Florida. Great Barrington.
Malcolm Fick, alternate.
Hancock. Hinsdale. Lanesboro. Lee.
Donovan, delegate.
Thank you. Lennox.
Cam Keber, alternate.
Thank you. Monterey. Mount Washington.
Uh, Jim Lovejoy, alternate.
Thank you. New Ashford. North Adams.
Henlon, Dalia.
Otis. Peru. Pittsfield, uh, Irvin, delegate. Richmond.
Fred Schubert, alternate.
Thank you. Sandersfield. Savoy. Sheffield.
Alternate.
Stockbridge.
Nancy Sosha, delegate.
Thank you. Tearingham.
Alternate, but I think I'm becoming delegate, so, but for now, alternate.
Okay, Sarah. Washington.
Don Gagnon, delegate.
Thank you. West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Roger Bolton.
Delegate.
Oh, uh, Roger Bolton, alternate.
Thank you. And Windsor.
Doug McNally, uh, delegate.
Thank you.
And Sheila, there was a typo on the roster that we skipped over New Marlborough. That was the new.
I saw the new. Is there someone here from New Marlborough? Okay, thank you. The roll is called.
Thank you. Um, did I hear Roger Lawrence from Williamstown say he's here?
Yes, you did. And I, I also heard, uh, Bolton, alternate. So I'm the brand new delegate. Somebody's gonna have to explain to me what this means.
The delegate gets to vote for their, uh, represent, the community they represent. And if they're not in attendance, then the alternate steps up. We're fortunate to have a hundred percent participation from the town of Williamstown tonight. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, roll calls out of the way. For the purposes, the purpose of discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 20th, 2021 meeting of the Berchley's and Planning Commission.
Renee Wood, who Sheffield move to approve?
Thank you, Renee.
Second.
Thank you. And who's seconding?
Uh, Crob.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions, comments, any changes? Errors? Hearing none, I'll run a roll call vote. John Duval.
Yes.
Peter Trab.
Yes.
Mary McGurn.
Yes.
Malcolm Fick.
Yes.
Buck Donovan.
Buck, you're muted.
Oh, I said yes.
There he is. Thank you, Buck. Uh, Pam Keever.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, James Lovejoy.
Uh, staying.
Thank you. Kyle Hamlin, yes. Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Fred Schubert.
Yes.
Renee Wood.
Uh, Kyle, if I was at the meeting, yes. If I wasn't abstaining.
Fair enough. Uh, Nancy Sosha.
Yes.
Sarah Hudson.
Yes.
Don Gagnon.
Abstain.
Roger Lawrence.
Abstain only because I haven't seen the document.
Thank you. Uh, and Doug McNally.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Motion passes up. Comments from the public? Anyone from the public care to bring anything to the floor this afternoon, this evening? Thank you. Delegate in alternate issues, any delegate or alternate want to bring something to the floor?
I'll stick my nose in again. It's Fred Schubert in Richmond. I mentioned this earlier. Uh, we are having a problem with trash being dumped in Richmond Pond. If any of the other communities are dealing with a trash dumping problem, any helpful hints as to how to collar the perpetrators would be appreciated. We have readjusted certain cameras, uh, in the general area. Uh, but this is, we're afraid going to be an ongoing problem. Just for information only, don't need any action by anybody at this point. I'm gonna follow up with suggestions later, uh, by email. That would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert. Good luck with your detective work. And let us know how, keep us surprised as how you make out.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other, uh, delegate or alternate issues? Hearing none, I'll look for, uh, you, you received in the packet, a copy of all the executive committee, uh, actions from, I believe it was last two meetings. Um, I believe we need a motion for this, but are there any questions or comments or concerns? Anyone want to ask, uh, what happened, so to speak? Hearing none, we'll move into the next item on the agenda tonight. We have a list of candidates for officers for fiscal year 2022. It will also take nominations from the floor this evening. So, um, first of all, I'll see if there's any nominations from the floor for any position. Hearing none, I'll look for a motion, a motion to approve the slate of officers as presented from the nominating committee.
Don't move. Doug McNally, Windsor.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNally. I missed the second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schubert. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, it'll be John Duval, Adams for the chair, Malcolm Fick, Great Barrington, um, for vice chair, Sheila Irvin, uh, for clerk, and Buck Donovan. Pardon me, uh, for treasurer. Uh, we're on a roll call vote. Uh, John Duval?
Yes.
Peter Trab?
Yes.
Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Pam Keever?
Yes.
James Lovejoy?
Yes.
Kyle Hamlin, yes. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Fred Schubert?
Yes.
Renee Wood?
Yes.
Sarah Hudson?
Yes.
Don Gagnon?
Yes.
Roger Lawrence?
Abstain.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Uh, and Doug McNally.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And with that vote, I will turn over chairmanship to Mr. Duval. And the rest of the meeting, I believe, is under his guidance.
Thank you, Kyle. And I wanted to mention to you, um, I think, well, for the past several years, you have been the chair of the BRPC. And, you know, I'm a chair myself, then a chair several times over the years of different boards and committees. And I just have a lot of respect for you and the way you run the meetings. Um, very positive, very patient, and responding to all inquiries. So what is really, you think you get to a point, I've seen, I've learned everything, but I really appreciate the, um, uh, calling into the meetings that you have chaired, and I want to thank you for your service. Um, without letting you leave, but, uh, thank you for your service as chair of the, uh, BRPC.
Hey, thank you for the kind words. It's, I make it look, I make it enjoyable because I'm having fun myself. I always have had fun at these meetings and I learned, uh, I think I said this in the executive committee meeting, most of the, uh, things I learned, I learned from people on this commission. So Sheila Irvin was, were you the chair before I came on, or was there somebody between me and you, Sheila?
It was me.
I think it was Sheila. So I learned a lot from Sheila coming in. So thank you for the kind words. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, um, just about a minute or so to, um, let everyone know just a little bit about me. Um, I, I'm currently the, currently a member of the Adams Board of Selecting, it's out of ads. Entering my 10th year on the board, currently chair. Um, previous to that, I was a member of the Adams Cheshire School Committee for 17 years. Um, also been town meeting for many years, um, been a member of the executive committee, uh, several years. Where's the violins? Kyle, I thought the violins were going out. So, um, just let everybody know, I'm not sure if everybody knows, knows me, but, um, just, uh, about involved with local politics for many, many years and enjoy what I do. And hopefully I can bring some of my experience, um, to the, uh, BRPC. But as Tom, as Kyle has said, it is a great team to work with. So, uh, looking forward to it.
Yeah, I think, I think you just need to practice the word no.
Are you going to play, are you going to play us this song, a parting song? With the guitar. Okay, next on the agenda is number six. It's the endorsement of committee chairs and at large executive committee member appointments for FY 2022. Um, the commission chair is, uh, has the authority to appoint, um, committee chairs. And, um, what we've done is we've, um, asked the individuals who have been working these, who have been chairs in the past, if they were interested in continuing. Unfortunately, we do have the majority are willing to continue. Um, and we'll talk about, uh, becoming members of committees and also possibly being a chair yourselves. Um, after we get through, uh, a couple of votes here. Um, so this one is the, it indicates the BRPC bylaws require the commission to approve the committee chairs as recommended by the BRPC chair. Um, all of the individuals are listed, and I think we'll just vote on the, uh, chairs themselves for the, uh, environmental review committee. Roger Bolden from Lampstown, who is returning. Um, the commission development committee chair, Renee Wood and Sheffield, who's returning. Regional issues committee, CJ Haas from Pittsfield, who is returning. Berkshire Brownfields Committee, Sheila Irvin from Pittsfield is returning. And, um, since Kyle now has a lot of time on his hands, uh, the Berkshire comprehensive economic development strategy committee will be Kyle Hamlin of North Adams. Um, so I, oh, so the chair appoints, so that will be the list of chairs. The, uh, BRPC bylaws require the commission to approve at large executive committee members as recommended by the BRPC chair. I have been one myself for several years. Um, the two that have been chosen are Kyle Hamlin. He has indicated that he would like to continue. Um, he is a, will be, I've now, I've, uh, um, approved him to be the at large, uh, delegate, and he is from North Adams, as you know. And Sam, uh, also an at large member, uh, who is from Peru, also is knowledgeable about transportation issues. So that's the list of committee chairs and the two at large positions. Any questions in regards to, uh, agenda item number six?
We have to vote on this, John?
What's that?
Do we vote on this?
No, let's see, it's chair points, the, uh,
Actually, they do, you do need to vote on it. The commission has to approve your recommendations.
Okay, so the chair recommends, okay.
Yes. Well, I move to approve, uh, the slate that was presented by, uh, the chairman.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Kyle's the second. So being new to this, I do not have a list of all names. So can Kyle or, uh, Sheila call up the names, please?
Yeah, I can, I can read it off.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, John Duval?
Yes.
Peter Trab?
Yes.
Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Pam Keever?
Yes.
James Lovejoy?
Yes.
Kyle Hamlin, show me his abstaining. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
CJ Haas? Well, I'm sorry, he's here, but Sheila Irvin is the delegate. I'm sorry, that's my mistake. Uh, Fred Schubert?
Yes.
Renee Wood?
Yes.
Sarah Hudson?
Yes.
Don Gagnon?
Yes.
Roger Lawrence?
Abstain.
And Doug McNally?
Yes.
Has anyone showed up since the first initial roll call? Is there anybody I missed?
Does Nancy Sosha, am I on that list?
Yep, Nancy Sosha, I called you out the first time. So Nancy Sosha.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes. Moving on to agenda item seven, ratification of commission representatives to relative or to related groups. And again, the BRPC bylaw requires the commission to ratify the appointments of members who special or standing bodies not under that jurisdiction of the BRPC. The following people will need to be ratified for the identified committees for the Westfield, Riverwild and Scenic Advisory Committee rep will be Marie Raftery from Stockbridge. And for the Berkshire Metropolitan Planning Organization, the alternate Sam, how do you, uh, his last name, I'll make sure I don't mispronounce it. Hout from Peru. So we will need a, uh, roll call vote on that also.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, roll call vote.
Sure thing. Uh, let's see, John Duval?
Yes.
Peter Trab?
Yes.
Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Malcolm Fick?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Pam Keever?
Yes.
James Lovejoy?
Yes.
Kyle Hamlin, yes. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Fred Schubert?
Yes.
Renee Wood?
Yes.
Nancy Sosha?
Yes.
Sarah Hudson?
Yes.
Don Gagnon?
Yes.
Roger Lawrence?
Abstain.
And Doug McNally?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion approved. Agenda item number eight, authorization for executive committee to act on behalf of the commission. The BRPC bylaws require the commission to vote annually to reconfirm the authorization of the executive committee to act in the name of and on behalf of the commission. So there's an attached memo. Tom, could you explain this attached memo, please?
Yeah, basically our bylaws delegate certain responsibilities, uh, to the executive committee to act in certain areas. Those are listed in that memo, you know, uh, basically approving a warrant, uh, borrowing funds. We have a line of credit that we have tapped into, uh, infrequently, but we do that. Um, various personnel policies and authoring application, grant applications, um, seeking contributions, which we have very precious few, I have to say, uh, entering into contracts. And, um, you know, providing, uh, approving comments on various, um, state or uh, inter-community, uh, items. Then so approving supplemental comments for projects undergoing state and federal agency review. This is through our clearinghouse review committee primarily. Um, any established policies, um, and, um, acting on routine transportation matters. So those items are somewhat routine, um, you know, kind of day-to-day business operational items. Um, you know, we're requesting that the full commission, uh, allow the executive committee to, to take actions on those. Those are then reported back to the full commission at the subsequent meeting. Um, and where, where the, the bylaws are not, um, what we're not asking for are, you know, approval of big regional plans or policies, adoption of the assessment, election of officers, commit, uh, confirmation of appointments, approval of the, the transportation improvement program, and, um, endorsement of specific transportation projects, um, modification of the duties of the executive director, and adoption and amendments of bylaws. The full commission would retain those, um, you know, kind of responsibilities going forward. This is a little bit unusual in that we need to get written authorization from 22 of the municipalities. So in the packet, there was a, a form that we're asking you to kind of, you know, fill out and get back to us. It can be scanned, um, but we need to know, um, that you're authorizing us. We need to know your name, get your signature in the community you represent. This was really intended for the delegates.
Um, yeah.
That form says fiscal year 2021 on it.
Oh, okay, that, that's wrong. But we'll get you the right form, um, as, as soon as we can.
Why don't you send that out as a standalone, so we can dig through and figure out how to print it out of, of the whole packet?
And, and would it be easier as a PDF or a Word document? We can do it either way to folks, or both? People like both?
Well, we got to sign it. So, uh, the PDF is as good as a Word. You're not going to change any, anything in the form.
No, we, we would accept an electronic signature too, though, if you wanted to do that.
Um, in the interest of time, can people just scratch out 21 and put 22 and initial it? Okay.
That, that's fine by me if everybody does that. I think it might be confusing, Renee. We'll get this out tomorrow, uh, to people, right? Kate, you can kind of get, get that out. You've got the list and go out. I think that might be easier, Renee, I think, uh, that, because some folks are not going to maybe hear these instructions and then just for formality, it might be easier.
Yeah, you have some members absent.
So that was, you know, uh, that was really the explanation. There's no specific action tonight, uh, that it, there is going to require, you know, the delegates to approve this going forward.
Okay, any further questions? Moving on to agenda number nine, recruitment to BRPC committees. Uh, as it states, the BRPC has several standing or special committees to the commission and what attached in the packet is a list of the committees of the BRPC. Uh, Tom, did you want to give a general overview?
Yes, I'd be glad to do that. Um, and so we have the, you know, various committees that are, are listed. I can run through them. Um, the, uh, commission development committee really helps work on educational topics and recruitment of new members. And infrequently, when we need to do amendments to the, uh, bylaws, that committee would, uh, get involved. It's also very instrumental in, um, you know, uh, selecting the future officers as a subcommittee, a nominating subcommittee, um, gets, uh, appointed from that group. Um, I guess I, I do want to, uh, maybe before I launch into the, the specifics, is say that over this past year, I think the various committees have, uh, had a, um, a meaningful impact in a number of different areas. And I'm, I'm thinking of the Environmental Review Committee as an example in that, uh, the Environmental Review Committee really provides advisory comments to the, primarily to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, uh, Agency Office on development projects that, um, meet or exceed certain, uh, thresholds, such as land disturbance or those types of things. And we also this year provided some comments on proposed, um, changes to the regulations to MIPA. And in response to those comments, the, um, the woman who was leading that department from the state agency requested that we convene a meeting of other regional planning agencies across the state and really was interested in what we had to say in terms of how to improve that, um, regulatory process. So I do think that, you know, the, our committees have been making an impact on some of the state policies and programs that have been going forward. The finance, so that's another one that I think if, if you like to kind of delve into, um, you know, looking at various development projects from a, a site plan or a, a traffic volume, um, uh, area, uh, then that's the committee for you. And we meet as needed, uh, when we get various reviews or, uh, you know, requests from the, the so-called MIPA office to kind of work on things. The finance committee is really the overseer of the BRPC finances and it, you know, is really in, involved when we are kind of thinking about the, uh, the community assessments and making a recommendation. I think you all know that there is a per capita assessment that BRPC, um, assesses to the various communities. And these funds are incredibly important to the agency because they provide basically our only discretionary funding sources to provide educational trainings or, um, work on, um, uh, technical assistance requests. So, uh, that, and the finance committee also helps oversee the budget, uh, as we kind of move forward. Regional issues committee is another, uh, standing committee of the commission. And this committee, I think, is, I'd like to describe as a more deliberative committee. And when we have our commission meetings and we've had six times a year, um, it's not, there, there frequently, there's not a lot of time to delve into, uh, some of the key, uh, issues and kind of debate on back and forth and kind of get, bringing in experts on providing some of the technical information. So the regional issues committee is a place where that happens. And we will take topics, um, regulatory topics, uh, sometimes. Uh, this last year, we provided some in-depth comments on the, the SMART program, which is the state's new solar program. We've been very much engaged with the transportation climate initiative, which is a, uh, proposes to basically impose a, a tax on, um, transportation fuels to be used for, uh, climate mitigation measures. And has been very active in that. Um, this, this committee has been meeting once a month. Um, and, you know, on those types of advisory comments, which then, once the committee, uh, makes those comments, they're generally brought back to the full commission for discussion. Um, the Berkshire Brownfields Committee, we have a very active, uh, Brownfields program in the commission where we provide resources to, um, to do basically site evaluation, um, and assessment. And the Brownfield Committee, uh, decides which type of, um, projects get funding, uh, when we have Brownfields funding. And then the comprehensive economic development strategy committee is an economic development committee, um, working with the Economic Development Administration as a requirement, um, to, um, really provide some high-level priorities in terms of economic development priorities for the, the county with the hopes of bringing in some the county with the hopes of bringing in some additional federal funding. So that's another committee that it's been meeting relatively frequently. I think we've met eight or ten times a year. It's mostly a midday meeting that we have. So I'm kind of rambling through these, hopefully that you can understand them a little bit. But we do are very much interested in recruiting new members to these committees. I think, at least for the time being, we'll continue to meet either virtually or hybrid so that the time commitment may be minimized in terms of minimizing travel. If anyone wants to learn more about these committees or wants to kind of sign up, you know, shoot me an email and I'll be glad to talk with you more about that.
So, Tom, is there a timeframe that you would like to have a inquiries within the next few weeks or?
Yeah, within the next few weeks, I think. So our our process will be is each each committee has a staff member assigned to it. And I've asked our staff, you know, liaisons to reach out to existing committee members to see if they want to continue on and then, you know, and recruit new members. So we really need to get any any of those those committees set very soon so we can actually start start, you know, having meetings. We do have, we have a deadline for the Regional Issues Committee meeting. There's, I believe that August eleventh, that we're going to be providing some more comments on the TCI initiative. So if anyone is really interested in that, they should let me know ASAP.
Okay, any questions in regards to the committees of the BRPC? Item, agenda, item number ten, the CUSAC Award nominations. And I believe last year, we did not present the CUSAC Award because of the pandemic, but this year, we should be able to do that. And in your packets, there's a history of who the individuals were that have received the award. And the award is for the outstanding contributions to planning in Berkshire County. The award will be given at the September sixteen, two thousand twenty one annual meeting. And there is a background on Charles Cusick. Anyone would like to go through that at your leisure? And then after that, there are the recipients. So some years, it's been slightly difficult to identify an individual. So so, Tom, at September sixteenth, it's going to be presented. When the, what would you like to see as a process to receive suggestions for the award?
You're muted.
Am I muted?
No, Tom.
I'm I'm sorry. I I had a cleaning service above my head, so I muted. We'd like to get nominations back by August twenty sixth. And then the Executive Committee meeting, well, the Executive Committee will act on it at their September meeting, which is on September second. And that will give us time to, you know, do the necessary preparations for the meeting on the annual meeting.
So, Tom, I assume there's a form that can be filled out?
It's the form that was in the packet.
Right, it's in the packet, okay.
Yeah, it's right in the packet. And we'll we'll, we're not really picky. We'll take anything. Have an idea of, you know, an individual or a group who has really made, as it says, it's kind of loose, outstanding contributions to planning in Berkshire County. Just give us a narrative of why and, you know, what are they done? And why do you think that they deserve this award?
Um, we'll get it posted under news and announcements too on the website, right?
Right.
With a link to the form. So you could tell people to go there.
Yep.
If you know anybody wants to nominate someone.
Okay, any questions on the CUSAC Award nominations? Hearing none, let's move on to agenda item eleven. The full commission meetings. And the Executive Committee held the discussion in the last meeting and also a little bit during today's meeting prior to this one of how we're going to meet going forward. I think a lot of communities like ours and Adams, we've decided to, the majority of our boards are meeting in person. The Executive Committee agreed since we're located throughout the county that we would continue with the Zoom meetings until April first, twenty twenty two. There is the option to meet at the VRPC offices. There has been a setup and there will be a VRPC employee available for those who want to attend in the office. So the question we have for the full commission is what type of setup would we like to do for the full commission meetings? Be it a hybrid model or completely remote? Before we start that discussion, Tom, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, no, I think you've summed it up very well, John. Again, we would be available, you know, for hybrid meetings, either executive or full if we didn't go in person.
So we'd like to open up for discussion to our membership. What would you like to see for the full commission meetings? Tell me remote, in person or hybrid?
Maybe, I mean, I think something is lost by not meeting together. Because it it just just has a totally different quality, but maybe the hybrid is the answer. But.
I agree with that. The hybrid, I think, is probably the best option. Gives people who cannot easily get into Pittsfield the chance to go remote, those who can get in to come in.
Just has a different quality.
Yeah, Roger Lawrence, I I agree that you have the option to meet in person. I think the contact in the sense of the dialogue is stronger in person, but not everybody can make it. And the hybrid model serves both of those.
Anyone else who would like to add to this conversation?
Yeah, I I would like to suggest also that, you know, I think it's important to try to make these meetings in person if you possibly can. And I think realistically, you know, there's, they're, having done remote meetings now for quite some time, you know, and our other boards, you know, there's something missing.
Definitely.
You know, without in-person meeting and the opportunity to, you know, have sort of before and after discussions and things like that. I I I'm, we're, the town of Washington is working on a hybrid model as well with the technology. Similar technology to one apparently that the VRPC is going to be trying. We'll see how it works out. I do certainly believe that the in-person meetings are important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Renee. And yeah, hi, John. This is Renee. I think the hybrid is kind of the best of both worlds. Those who cannot make it, I mean, for me, it's an hour up there and an hour back. But if I can make it, then I have that choice. Otherwise, I can get on Zoom. So also with testing this hybrid model through the RPC, it's going to give, I think, a number of towns who are looking at the same thing, a leg up on the technology because somebody else is doing it. So I I think it's the best of both worlds.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Anyone else?
I'd like to reinforce Jim's comment that I think a position of encouragement to meet in person is a good idea.
Yep.
This does not back away from my position that I think the hybrid is the way to go, but encouragement for people to join the actual meeting at the offices is is sound.
I agree.
Okay.
The other thing I might say too on that, on the idea of the hybrid is that what we've found in our discussions is that, you know, that there's, you need to have a, you know, a bit more management. You know, in terms of, you know, how how to manage a meeting that, you know, has both in-person people and, you know, you know, in-person participation and, you know, remote participation because being able to, you know, to call on people, you know, having somebody who's in charge of managing, you know, that, you know, I think that, you know, there there are complications in the hybrid model that I think we're all going to need to learn how to manage them effectively. And I think that that that's going to take some work on the behalf of, you know, staff to try to figure out exactly how this is going to be managed effectively.
This is Doug from Windsor. I I agree because before Zoom and everything like that, I was doing a bunch of statewide things and would call into meetings and the people who weren't in person often felt found it very difficult to participate. I I would suggest, I know that the RPC has a large screen TV there and I I think if we're going to do hybrid, it has to be set up so that all the live participants can see the screen and somehow that you have a camera that the remote people can see the panel.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Mary McGurn from Egremont. To take up that last comment, there is a piece of technology which can certainly do that. It's currently employed by Egremont for its hybrid meetings. It's called an OWL. Costs about a thousand dollars. And it's a projection that will take in three hundred and sixty degree view of the in-person meeting and it is connected to Zoom. And therefore, it could also be displayed on the television that will be in the in-person meeting room. And we have found that that has worked very well as far as allowing for the convenience for many of remote meetings, as well as for those people who want to come to Town Hall and meet in person. We do have a policy where, at this point, only the only the immediate members of a committee meet in person. All public is still meeting and attending meetings, I should say, remotely. Still due to exercising caution.
Okay, thank you. Very good input. Tom, I I think you mentioned that the executive meeting that the BRPC purchased the OWL?
Yes, we do have the OWL. And we've used it for a couple of staff meetings. The other, you know, and it seems like it has a lot of promise for technology. I've participated in other meetings where the OWL has been used. There will be some, you know, learning aspect of how to run a meeting and with it, I think, to make sure that, you know, people who are participating remotely do get recognized. We, we had a few glitches with it. I mean, and we've only practiced it a couple of times, but the last time we used it, there was a delay in the signal, which would be, I think that would drive everybody mad who was participating remotely. So we want to get that fixed. And then I think it really depends a lot on the light. But this is a technology that the camera really kind of takes in three hundred and sixty degrees. So you kind of see a panorama of everybody in the room. The microphone is really a very good microphone so that it picks up voices, you know, from across the way. And and it is easy to hear people who are participating remotely. So it holds a lot of promise. We have that technology. Just need to learn how to use it a little bit better.
Could I just, excuse me, could I just add one thing that we we need to resolve something about the use of chat? And there's been some discussion before about this and we had, I think, the Executive Committee had kind of thought that maybe we should not permit chat. And speaking as a committee chair and as a general participant, I strongly oppose allowing chat during these meetings. I think it confuses things and some people think that they'll be recognized on chat, but sometimes it's hard for the chair to to recognize that, you know, especially with a large group. So whatever we want to do, we have to make it very clear to people. Because a lot of, a lot of people are really used to using chat. And 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 if we do want to to prevent that, then we have to make that very clear. I I just add personally, I don't like chat because it introduces the possibility of comments between the between the people present, you know, not through the chair. And I think that is so different from the way the old style meetings would operate that it's not, it's not nice. That's just my opinion.
Well, Roger, based on the discussion we had, I'm strongly recommending that we disable chat for any of these public meetings. We were not able to do it today technologically, but at the Executive Committee meeting, we're able to figure out how to disable it. And we can selectively enable and disable. And for these types of meetings, I'm going to recommend that it be disabled and we not use it. But it is very useful at work meetings where, you know, you you were working with, you know, a group of people on a product and they have questions. And so we didn't want to disable it completely from our account. So we're we're still trying to figure that out.
Thank you.
There is a, and speaking of chat, there is a question in the chat about what a hybrid model would look like. And basically, it would allow people to attend in person and with this technology. But it would also allow people to participate remotely. And the the law that was passed recently allows that type of meeting until at least April first of the coming year.
It's worth noting that the regular open meeting law allows remote participation as long as there's a quorum at the site.
Correct, yes.
Yes, and over the years, we've discussed about having VRPC meetings adopt that. It's a provision that the body, in this case, BRPC, would have to adopt. And it would have to apply to, my understanding, would have to apply to all of our committees. And thus far, you know, we have not been, we've not been willing to adopt that provision.
There's a lot of things that go with that provision, including the main problem with it is making sure that everybody has every document that is, including those that are presented at meetings. There's a lot of logistical issues with that. The only thing I wanted to say is, I know we in Sheffield discussed this and we have decided to stay with open meetings. Because if our link were to go down and it was like in a public hearing or something of that sort, and we would have to, if our link wasn't immediately reestablished, cancel the meeting because now the public doesn't have the right to participate and it would have to be rescheduled. I don't know if the RPC is subject to those same issues on a hybrid meeting. It's just a caution that I bring up.
Well, yes, I mean, if the if the link went down, then we couldn't hold the meeting. But it's a little bit, I mean, we're not a regulatory body so that it wouldn't be that much of an imposition for us to reschedule generally.
I'm sorry, just as long as we're introducing a catalog of possible errors, I might say that I was in a meeting not so long ago, which was bombed, really Zoom bombed. And it took really adroit action by the the host to cancel that meeting and then open it up again. This is not a public meeting. And so the staff needs to have some capacity to handle that as well. And so the staff needs to have some capacity to handle that as well.
Agreed. I mean, that's what we've been doing is we've been requiring people to go into a waiting room and then admitting them. And that's what I would ask um, you all to make sure that your name or your affiliation is clearly evident to us. So that, and we, you know, we'll be very reluctant to admit um, people that have uh, uh unfamiliar names or our numbers. Now that gets a little tricky when we get to the public aspect of it. Um, but there is a uh, a possibility to send uh, a message to someone in a waiting room. We can ask them what their affiliation is.
Okay, any more discussion on the uh, full commission meetings um, attendance? So it looks like um, the next meeting's on September sixteenth, we're going to do a hybrid model, from what I hear.
Well, actually, John, now that we've had this wonderful discussion, the um, September sixteenth meeting is going to be piggybacked with our annual meeting. And the annual meeting is going to be in person at the stationary factory. So the September sixteenth meeting will be an in-person meeting at the stationary factory.
Any comments in regards to that? So that will be an in-person meeting on the sixteenth of September?
Correct.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next on the agenda is uh, number twelve, review of B R P C website. Tom?
I thought since this was somewhat of an organizational meeting, uh, that I would just very quickly make people aware of our website. I think we did it a little while ago, but I'll I'll kind of run through it again, big maybe five minutes and I'll ask the chair to cut me off after I've gone my five minutes. Uh, what I want to try to do is share my screen. And and can people see the B R P C website now?
Not yet.
Oh, no? Okay. Well, maybe I won't do this and we'll get.
It says it's coming.
Oh.
Has started. Whoops, that's my screen. Try again, Tom.
Okay. It we locked up here, so. This didn't work very well. Let me try again. The um, wonders of technology.
Tom, are you host or co-host?
I am a, I should be a co-host. Kate, can you make sure that I'm a co-host?
Uh, yeah, and it does say multiple participants can share. And Yep. You are co-host.
Well, I am sorry, it's not allowing me. It's giving a uh, a a failure error message. So Mister Chair, I think we can move on to the next item.
Your five minutes are up, Tom.
I'm sure that was very helpful.
I had the luxury of bringing it up on the on my own s- second screen and I have to say it looks very good, so I'll throw that into the mix.
Well, maybe we can make you be the co-host and you can share it, Jim.
I could share mine, Tom.
Can you open it?
Yeah. Hold on, if you're willing to give me a sec.
Haven't had a chance to look at it in quite some time, but I just just did and I was able to get quite a bit of information and find topics of interest ra- rather quickly. So I I have to say that's uh, that's pretty good.
You're all seeing it now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's great, Kate. I'll I'll let you walk through it. You're on. Uh, I think one of the things we wanted to do is maybe scroll down to the the calendar and let people know if where they can find information quickly.
Oh, sorry, let me. So you see that the committee, today's meetings were listed. And for instance, the commission meeting, if you click through, here's the Zoom link, here's the agenda. And the meeting materials. So that'll pop up in another screen. So if you can't find the email we sent, you can always go through the website to events and look at the calendar for the month. And that's true for all our subcommittee meetings as well. Each of our program areas breaks down into their many projects, public health probably having the most. Descriptions of their activities.
Yeah, so if you click on one of those links, it'll give you a little bit more information about the project. These are the current projects. So the the, again, the organization agency is broken into these various programs. Uh, community development, housing, uh, community planning, data and information services, economic development, emergency preparedness, environment and energy planning, public health, regional initiatives and services, a broader type of grouping, transportation planning and administration. So there again, these are the current items that we're working on.
Various planning resources.
Um, if I can just make one suggestion.
Sure.
Events, you know, a calendar is and events um, might not be synonymous and you know, somebody who's looking for a calendar might might be a good idea to sort of make it say calendar, you know, if that's what you you've got.
Well, it's on, it's on our homepage, Jim. That, so this is the homepage when you kind of click on BerkshirePlanning.org. And there's a calendar of events.
Okay, I was looking at the thing on top.
Yep.
Yeah, no, so that's good. Keep scrolling down to this page. Kate, stop. Um, so there's a calendar events and you would click on the the view more. View more is a in in important thing, read more. So these are just kind of teasers to get you to the page where you need to go. Um, so if you if you think that it's kind of a brief um, summary and click on the a a box that either says view more or read more. And what we try to do is, you know, the news and announcements is something current. Um, what's been happening and early scroll back up a little bit, Clay, Kate. The hot topics is really something that is, we really want to bring attention to in terms of current uh, items. But I I think that's the, that's really what I wanted to try to to cover uh, uh, John. I don't, unless people have any questions. I I do think there is a a fair amount of information, especially about our our current work. And if you are are interested in um, you know, some of the projects. I I does give you, and also on the contacts, which if you can open up that page, um, it has the email addresses and the phone extensions for our staff, which I think is an easy way to contact us.
And you go to about, please? So Tom, where does it list on the homepage, the members of the B R P C, for example?
It's it's there. It is the commission and the committees.
Okay.
And so this goes through and so these are the member towns. And then we have, we have the delegates and the alternates are listed here. Now, I know you and I, John, have talked about, you know, posting the um, officers. I think we need to do that a little bit more uh, clearly. But you are listed under the um, executive committee. And then if we have any job openings, they're in employment. Um, when we do actually have meeting per um, meetings, there'll be directions to get to it. Uh, and then some just general information about the open meeting law and those requirements.
I just thought I'd point out agendas and minutes are here for the current year and past years are will are starting to be archived. This new website started what, a year in October, Tom?
Uh, yeah, it's just this last year.
So there's all the committees and these all link through.
All right, so any other questions?
Okay, uh, moving on to item thirteen, uh, executive director's report. Tom, have anything?
I just want to highlight again that, and if you've been a municipal official, you'll you'll know about this. But we do have the state ethics commissions requirement that we provide you with a uh, copy of conflict of in um, conflict of interest law. And you need to kind of acknowledge that you received that. Good, I think you can stop sharing now.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
And as I mentioned, at the uh, executive committee, I I learned just a few, uh, you know, a little while ago that the uh, the uh, state legislature has finally approved the the compromised budget or the conference committee budget. And um, we'll know, I think tomorrow, where uh, district local technical assistance funding is in that budget. Oh. And I think um, just the point of interest, you know, at the last meeting, we um, had a presentation by Susan Straight from the Donahue Institute about this differential policy, uh, differential privacy policy that the census was employing. And, you know, the latest information I have from her is that the magnitude of error that has been, you know, inserted into these uh, numbers uh, to protect privacy of specific groups has been uh, reduced. So it 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 seems like the numbers that we will be getting, while they will be di- distorted somewhat will be less distorted than maybe we feared they were going to be distorted. That was it, uh, uh, John.
Hey, Tom, just one more thing. In 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 our packets, we have the uh, summary of conflict of interest law. For for municipal employees, it appears we need to sign off our load, so.
Yes, we need to get those acknowledgements that you received a copy of that.
Okay. So when do you need those back by?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
I have a question about the packet because I keep hearing about a packet that was sent. Is that like an email packet that was sent to us or something in the mail? I don't understand.
It was emailed. It was, it had the material for today's meeting.
Oh, okay, it's in that packet.
Yeah, it's all, what we do is we bundle all the documents into one big PDF.
Okay.
So you got to kind of scroll through it. That, what we were just talking about, that acknowledgement sheet is I think it's to the next to the last um, page in that packet.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure many of you haven't printed out the entire packet.
No.
But you could, you know, print out that page and and send it in to us.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Hey, um, Tom, this is Pam. Um, I I, did I read correctly that we could email our affirmation of receipt of the package back to, I think it was Berkshire, it was assistant or something like, I forget the email address because I did it. So if people, I presume it's probably easier for people just to send an email and say you received it, right?
Yes, that that we don't need this specific form. We just need an acknowledgement that you received it. Yes.
But what was the email again?
OfficeAssistant@BerkshirePlanning.org.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so that is it for the agenda. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up at this point?
I was wondering about the offices. I know there's been, you know, I've been sitting in on several executive meetings, but I didn't do this one. So is the office going to be relocating or staying where you are?
I can give a little report there is that earlier today at the executive committee, we did um, approve me as the executive director entering into negotiations with the owner of our current um, building. So that the first choice was for us to stay at One Finn Street where we are with expanded op- with expanded offices across the hallway. There was some uh, available space there that they included in their bid package. So that's the preferred option right now and I'll be working with the the building owner and manager about, you know, securing a lease as quickly as possible. So we're, hopefully, we're going to stay here and and have a little bit of a better situation.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, Harry Dunn, uh, we have motion to adjourn.
Someone.
We have a motion and we have second?
Second. Kyle, can you sing us out?
No, you don't deserve that. You guys are too nice.
This is a whole new thing. I gotta get tune up my guitar next time and we'll uh, you know.
I run scales.
No problem, Jim.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. See you at the next meeting.